Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum this evening with councilmember excused as well. Council met earlier this evening for an executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters. No decisions were made. At this time, I'd like to invite our Director of Community Planning and Development Keith Staley to come to the podium to give us an update on the Fourth Avenue Bridge camp.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am here to give you a very brief update on the status of the Fourth Avenue Bridge encampment. As you know, on September 10th, City Council gave staff some specific direction in regards to that encampment, that we were to continue to work with those individuals and to find an alternative site for them. I'm here to announce this evening that no such site has been yet located and that we are continuing to work with that community and the concerned clergy to find a suitable path forward. We don't anticipate that happening immediately. We are going to continue to work with the concerned clergy to understand what their abilities are to support that community and the individuals in that community, and we're also going to be continuing to plan for that relocation, understanding that at some point in the future, that will happen sooner rather than later. But that is going to take planning, that is going to take identifying a site and resources to support a facility somewhere around 25 to 30 individuals. We are developing those plans and we anticipate coming back to City Council sometime in the near future to share those plans with you and to get your feedback in regards to those next steps. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Keith? All right, thank you for that update.
You're welcome, thank you.
At this point, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. We have four, count them, four special recognitions this evening. The first one, item 2A, is recognizing National Voter Registration Day, and we will be reading a proclamation, and I've got, yep, Councilmember Partially has that proclamation she'll read, and then I'll invite our county auditor, Mary Hall, up to address us.
Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day, and whereas the city of Olympia is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections, and whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 24th, 2019, as National Voter Registration Day, and whereas the goal of 2019 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and to motivate eligible citizens to vote in the coming months, and whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will become before the voters on Election Day, and now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council hereby recognizes September 24th, 2019, as National Voter Registration Day in Olympia and encourages all eligible city residents to register to vote. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this day, 24th day of September, 2019, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Partially, and now I'd like to give this proclamation to our county auditor, Mary Hall, and you can come forward and explain the importance of today.
I'd like to thank the council for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Currently, Thurston County has over 185,000 registered voters, and in Olympia, there are over 35,588, actually, to be exact, as of today. And this is the sixth National Voter Registration Day we have celebrated in Thurston County, and our goal for registering voters just this week is 1,500. We have groups out across the county, at colleges, in high schools, registering people to vote, and right now, it can never be easier. We've enacted some new laws, came into effect this year, same-day voter registration is now law, so if you procrastinate and get close to the general election, you can actually come into my office up until 8:00 PM on Election Day, register and vote. Some other exciting legislation that went into effect this year is 16- and 17-year-olds can now preregister to vote, so they can sign up, we hold on to those registrations, and they're automatically registered when they turn 18. So this is great for when they're getting their driver's licenses or voter registration drives in school. Another thing we do on National Voter Registration Day is we have the Auditors' Cup, where we challenge the colleges in the county. It's very competitive of who registers the most voters, they get this trophy, and it's a traveling trophy, and we do that with high schools as well. So Olympia High School is participating this year, so anyway, I'll wish them best of luck, we'll know that pretty soon. So if anybody isn't registered to vote, it's very easy, you can go online at votewa.gov, follow the prompts, you can register online. So anyway, thank you very much for your support, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for our auditor? All right, thank you so much, Mary, for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Remember, your vote is your voice. All right, next, item 2B, which is a proclamation recognizing Charles Mitchell Day, and I'd like to invite our Historic Preservation Officer in our Community Planning and Development Department, Mary Grace Godu, to talk to us about this special recognition this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, my name is Mary Grace Godu. I'm Olympia's Historic Preservation Officer and Art, Cultures and Heritage Coordinator. Tonight, we have representatives of the Olympia Heritage Commission, Olympia's Heritage Community as well in the room, and we've reached out to the Black community and to social justice, inclusion and equity groups in the community to tell them about tonight. Because tonight, we share the history of Olympia's only known slave, a young man named Charles Mitchell. Charles was born into slavery in Maryland and given as a wedding gift between southern families and brought to Olympia at the age of about eight. On September 24th, in 1860, at the age of about 12 or 13, Charles escaped to freedom by stowing away on a steamer mail ship bound for Victoria, B.C., out of Olympia. This history is embedded here in Olympia, where Charles's daily life as a slave was known and accepted within the community. It's our history, and this evening's special recognition is an opportunity to consider how it echoes in our community today. We have two folks here this evening to share this story. We're fortunate to have Susan Rohr here, she's representing the Olympia Heritage Commission and conveying their support for the proclamation. Susan's a respected historian, recently retired from the Washington State Historical Society. And following Susan, we have Seattle author and teacher Judy Bentley. Judy worked with Washington historian Lorraine McConaughey to bring the Charles Mitchell story to the public in a number of ways, including co-authoring a book written for young adults called Free Boy. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to the City Council and Madam Mayor about Charles Mitchell. As mentioned, I'm Susan Rohr, member of the Olympia Heritage Commission, and I was asked to present about our famous or well-known history of a slave child that was here in 1855.
Did we lose sound?
The first surveyor general for the newly-appointed surveyor general for the Washington Territory was James Tilton, whose picture you see up here. He arrived in Olympia with his family and young slave boy, Charles Mitchell, who, as Mary Grace said, was originally from a plantation in Maryland. The Tilton home pictured there was located on Columbia Street overlooking Bud Bay, and that is where they resided. Charles, or Charlie, commonly known in Olympia, was seen running errands and performing household chores for the family. Tilton later stated that Charlie attended the local Indian school and church. He was contacted by Free Blacks from Victoria, where slavery was abolished by the British Parliament in 1833. They encouraged him to seek his freedom in Victoria by stowing away on the steamship Eliza Anderson. And let's see if we can get that picture up. There's a picture of it, and it traveled regularly between Olympia and Victoria. On September 24th, 1860, 159 years ago today, Charles departed Olympia, hidden aboard the ship, and arrived in Victoria the next day. Against the will of the ship captain, Charlie was taken into custody and housed in the local jail. The captain wanted to keep him aboard ship. Despite a lawsuit filed by James Tilton, the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Vancouver Island, David Cameron, ruled that Charles Mitchell was free on September 25th, 1860. It's believed that Mitchell was educated in the local public schools in Victoria, married and lived there on and off for the rest of his life. Newspapers carried this story, including Olympia's Pioneer and Democrat, which you can see published a headline story entitled "Fugitive Slave Case." The history of Charles Mitchell was not written about or well-known until Dr. Lorraine McConaughey, researching regional history for what became a set of exhibits to commemorate the 150th anniversary of the Civil War, came across this article, and I quote her, "I was blown out of my chair when I read the Olympia Pioneer and Democrat on microfilm from September 1860. It's very clear people in Washington Territory had strong opinions on states' rights and slavery. I was told so often that people didn't, that people came here to get away from the war. But when I saw the fugitive slave case, I thought they were reporting news from the East about the Underground Railroad. Instead, it was about a boy fleeing Olympia for Vancouver. It turned out this was a big story and an important historical story for our region." Dr. McConaughey and author Judy Bentley, who is here this evening, published the interesting book on the history of Charles Mitchell, which Judy will be speaking about later this evening. Thank you again on behalf of the entire Heritage Commission for the opportunity to support the proclamation of Charles Mitchell Day on September 24th, 2019.
Hello, I'm Judy Bentley, as introduced. I'm speaking this evening for myself and for Lorraine McConaughey, who you've heard from already, at least her words. She's unable to be here, she's in an Underground Railroad conference in Niagara Falls a week ago, on the East Coast. I cannot speak for Charles Mitchell, but wouldn't he be surprised that more than 150 years after he lived here, we remember him and the dark early morning when he hurried down the hill to stow away on the Eliza Anderson? Since the publication of Free Boy, his story has captured the imagination and admiration of many people. We did think that he stayed in Victoria, but after the publication of the book, a legal researcher, Thomas Blake, did extensive research and found that Mitchell returned to the U.S. right before the end of the Civil War, joined the Union Army, probably misrepresented his age, and in fact, lived a rather ordinary life, a long life, as a mariner and free to make his own choices thereafter. The Fifth Avenue Theater in Seattle brought the story to thousands of schoolchildren in Washington and Oregon through a traveling musical. They had a script written, hired music, a lyricist, and put on a wonderful production, which I was lucky to see a few times in schools. And I saw children in the audience were mesmerized and intrigued by this tough decision that Mitchell made at the age of 13, to leave a fairly comfortable but constricted life here for an unknown but free future. Most people who have learned the story are quite surprised that slavery was legal in Washington Territory at this point, and that an Underground Railroad in the form of just this Puget Sound mail steamer operated to free this boy. With this declaration, you are lifting up an inspiring story of community action and individual courage during a time of deep political divisions in this city, a city divided by its sympathies, differing sympathies during the lead-up to the Civil War. So I hope this proclamation would be one small step in recognizing the injustices in our shared history. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Rollins to read the proclamation.
Thank you. This proclamation was prepared by Mary Grace, so thank you. Whereas Charles Mitchell was born a slave in Maryland in 1847 and forcibly relocated to Washington Territory in 1855 by his master, James Tilton, and whereas the entrenched practice of buying, selling and owning humans was introduced to Washington Territory by some white settlers, and whereas Charles Mitchell was identified as a slave in Olympia, known to the general populace here, and resided in the Tilton home, now 1,009 Columbia Street Southwest, and whereas the U.S. Supreme Court's Fred Scott Decision, 1857, did render slavery legal in territories like Washington, while slavery was illegal in the British Empire, including the colony of Victoria, and whereas African Canadians from Victoria did reach out to the 13-year-old boy, Charles Mitchell, and encourage his escape from slavery in Olympia to freedom in Victoria, Vancouver Island, on the tiny Puget Sound Underground Railroad, and whereas Charles Mitchell, seeking life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, did on 24 September, 1860, stow away on an international mail steamer headed for Victoria, aided by African Canadians, James Allen and William Davis, and whereas Charles Mitchell's successful escape to freedom affirms the promises at the core of the American dream, and whereas this local story, only recently rediscovered, is an occasion to reconsider the enduring experience of American slaves and the many ways their difficulties, their contributions and their brave persistence continue to echo in our society, now therefore the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim September 24th, 2019, as Charles Mitchell Day, and encourages citizen awareness of this man's life and history in our community so that we can walk the path together toward a more equitable future.
Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 24th day of September, 2019, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor. Is there someone from the delegation that would like to accept the proclamation? Susan, all right. Any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Jones, followed by Councilmember Rollins?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Bentley and Ms. McConaughey for the work that you've done to bring this story to our community, and also the work of our Historic Commission to let us take a look at who we are and our background and where we've come from. I think that history is so important to help us know what we've inherited and who we are. It's important to this community and it's important to our nation, so I just want to honor this work and thank you for the reflection of where we've come from.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman?
So, one definition of history is stories that we choose to repeat, right? Stories we choose to tell, and this seems like an especially useful story to tell. And as I was hearing the report, I was thinking, we have a little mix-up about George Washington, Bush, and the first African-American folks coming in both here and into Lewis County, assuming that in Oregon, they weren't welcome, and in Washington, they were welcome. They were actually welcomed by the Hudson's Bay Company at Fort Niskwali, because this was still considered British territory at the time they came in. So the truth, you know, the truth is, when they came up here, they went to the factor at the British fort. They didn't come to a Washington territorial government that was friendly to them homesteading here. So I just thinking, this is an important story to retell, and we probably have to rethink how we tell those stories of Bush and Washington, the first African-American homesteaders up here.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollins, followed by Councilmember Partially?
Thank you so much. I just want to appreciate Judy and Lorraine as well for your work uncovering this story and just going, trying to go back and imagine, like, 13-year-old, and also imagining the society at the time, I mean, that this was, you know, respectable society and that it was well-known and apparently accepted enough that it was two men coming down from Victoria that aided his escape, and I would just, you know, would hope that we've learned something about our history today. I didn't know this story before a community member, Pat Tesoney, brought it to our attention last year, leading up to the 24th, the day of Charles's escape, and then he brought it to our attention again this year and suggested a Charles Mitchell Day, and so I just want to thank you, Pat, for bringing that to our attention, and then for Mary Grace for being able to do all the outreach and connect with the Heritage Commission and the support in bringing this history to light. I think one of the lessons is, when there is an injustice, to speak out against it and act against it, and not just kind of be quiet and polite, just because it's a high-society person that is carrying out the injustice, so. Happy Charles Mitchell Day, September 24th.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially?
It's always astounding to me that 150 years ago, it was legal to own another human being simply because of the color of their skin. What's sadder to me is it was 150 years ago, it was legal, and we've moved that dial so slowly to where we are today. That's sad. I think it begins by owning our past, really owning it and looking at it unvarnished, like Councilmember Gilman said, and saying that is our past, that's where we came from. But it's also incumbent on those of us a privilege to see it as our responsibility to move the dial now, because it is our privilege that has made that dial move very slowly. So I'm glad we're honoring Charles today, and I hope we all reflect on that and understand that history can teach us.
Thank you. Thanks for all the Heritage Commission's support for this proclamation, and hopefully it won't be the last time that we recognize Charles Mitchell Day. Thank you. Moving on to item 2C, it's declaring October, it's not yet October, but it is fall now. We're going to be declaring October as Walk to School Month, and I'd like to invite Carrie Wilson, who is our Walk and Roll Coordinator with Inter-City Transit, and is Patrick Murphy in the room? There he is, all right, our superintendent of Olympia School District. And so Carrie, do you want to speak to the proclamation first, and then we have Clark Gilman to read it?
Yeah, that'd be great. So, as you said, I'm Carrie Wilson, and I work with Inter-City Transit's Youth Education Program called Walk and Roll, and our mission is to educate and encourage youth to get around by biking, walking and taking public transit. This school year, we are once again partnering with the Olympia School District to hold Walk and Roll to School events at six Olympia schools. These events improve safety and reduce traffic congestion around the school by encouraging families to consider walking and biking instead of driving in a car. Last school year, nearly 2,000 students and families participated in Walk and Roll events. We would like to recognize the support we get from the Olympia Police Department, the Olympia Fire Department and the city of Olympia. Having them attend the events makes them extra special for the students and families. We invite you to come out and participate in one of our Walk and Roll events, especially on October 9th, when we are celebrating International Walk to School Day. Some of you have attended events in the past, and we thank you for that. So Patrick Murphy, Superintendent Patrick Murphy is here to accept the proclamation.
All right, so I'll have Councilmember Gilman read the proclamation.
Walk to School Month, whereas walking to school can build activity into a child's daily routine, improving health and school performance, and whereas driving students to school in private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air and water pollution, and whereas the city of Olympia constructs sidewalks, crossing improvements and neighborhood pathways to help students safely walk to school, and whereas members of the Olympia Police Department and Olympia Fire Department join Olympia schoolchildren in monthly Walk to School events, and whereas in the month of October, children, family members and community leaders around the world are joining together for Walk to School events, now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council hereby proclaims the month of October, 2019, as Walk to School Month in the city of Olympia, and encourages families, school employees and community leaders to show children that walking is a fun, safe and healthy way to get to destinations in their neighborhoods, whether they are schools, parks or other places. All community leaders can contribute to a culture of pedestrian safety year-round, even when driving, by slowing down to 20 miles an hour in school zones and stopping for pedestrians who are trying to cross the street. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 24th day of September, 2019, for the Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I want to start as a superintendent first. I'm a learner, and I'm a former history teacher, and I want to thank you for the story about Charles Mitchell tonight. I did not know that before, and it was powerful. The Olympia School District is excited to collaborate again this school year with Inter-City Transit's Walk and Roll Program to promote safe walking and biking with our students. Last night, during our Olympia School District Board of Directors meeting, we too proclaimed October as Walk to School Month. Our proclamation and the one you've approved tonight is in line with our recently adopted student outcomes, particularly student outcome number three, that says our students will advocate for the social, physical and mental wellness of themselves and others, and be hopeful about their future, and an indicator underneath that outcome states our students will be physically active and see exercise as a health-enhancing behavior that benefits them throughout their life. Students who walk and bike to school benefit from physical activity and come to school more ready to learn. Walking to school creates healthy habits that will hopefully follow our students into adulthood, and as was already stated, I just want to thank the Olympia Police Department. I've walked in some of the Walk and Roll events, and the kids love it when our officers are there. I want to thank the Olympia Fire Department and the city of Olympia for supporting our Walk and Roll to School Days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the team? Anybody? All right, Councilmember, or Mayor Protan Bateman?
I don't have a question, but I have a little anecdote that I would like to share. I was walking with my dog, I live near Madison, today, and a young student came up after school and saw my dog and came over to say hi and was petting my dog, and they were telling me where they lived, a couple blocks up, and I said, wow, the bus drops you off all the way down there? And they looked at me and they said, no, I'm a walker. So matter-of-factly, and I just thought, wow, that's, you know, really, really great. They didn't have walkers when I was in elementary school, so it's great that we're putting so much emphasis on young people getting out there and having the value of exercise and walking. It's a great element of our health and our well-being, so thank you for all the work that you're doing, and thank you very much, Carrie.
And if you don't walk and you can't ride your bike, ride the bus, that helps too.
There you go. Thank you so much, and thanks to Inter-City Transit for keeping that program rolling, so to speak. All right. Item 2D is a recognition of some of the VIPs we have at the city, and that's for Volunteers in Parks, which is a program that provides an opportunity for citizens to actively participate in park stewardship. So it's my pleasure to introduce Amy Stoll, who is our Parks- my pleasure to introduce Amy Stoll, who is our Park Stewardship Supervisor, and Jennifer Gessley-Gaymon, who's a Program Specialist in Parks, to announce who are our award winners this year.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm here to support our volunteer program and recognize their incredible work. For the details, I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer.
So thank you very much for allowing us to publicly recognize the amazing volunteers that we have. So for those of you who don't know, my name is Jennifer Gessley-Gaymon, and I'm the Program Specialist in the Park Stewardship Program. Our program is responsible for the volunteers who beautify the landscapes, maintain the trails, and restore the native habitats of the sixteen-hundred-plus acres of Olympia's parks. From August 2018 to July 2019, 2,275 people volunteered a total of 8,189 hours. So today, we're here to recognize the Volunteer Group of the Year and the Volunteer of the Year. These awards are not based on volunteer hours, but instead given to groups and persons whose dedication to volunteering in Olympia's parks far surpasses our expectations. So first will be the Volunteer Group of the Year. So our Volunteer Group of the Year is the Olympia Horseshoe Club. So the Olympia Horseshoe Club was founded in 1981, and they started pitching horseshoe, horseshoes at Priest Point Park when there were still pits over there. And then later, they were integral in helping to design the horseshoe pits that were constructed at Yager Park around 1986. Ever since then, the Horseshoe Club has been practicing there pretty much every week. So last month, I was able to present them with their award and their certificate, but today I wanted to present Dwayne Nolte and Jean Covington and Fritz with the public recognition and things that they wholeheartedly deserve. So on the behalf of the City of Olympia, thank you for the countless hours and the thirty-three-year partnership that we cherish.
Do you want to say anything?
Dwayne's going to say a couple words.
You don't have to.
I'm, uh, Mayor, I'm nervous. But we really appreciate this, our club, and we couldn't undo it without the help of the parks guys. They, they do a wonderful job of maintaining our, our pits. We do most of that work, but they come in and fix the lawns and stuff. This year, we were honored to have, we played in the Washington State Horseshoe Tournament, and they, they come to our club. And we got nothing but praise views for our green grass and pits, and they really did enjoy it here. And I, I can't thank you guys enough for all the help that you've been giving us. So I'm done.
Thank you.
So for our Volunteer of the Year, Jan Fleck is also a member with the City of Olympia Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. He started volunteering in 2016, and he became a Park Steward at Watershed Park in 2017. And when he's not running marathons all over the country, you can find him somewhere in Watershed Park pulling invasive plants. So if you ever go down to Watershed Park, if you leave the Henderson entrance, you go down to the, the fork and you take a left, if you're down there quite frequently, I beg you to try to find a piece of ivy, and it's not there anymore, and that's because of Jan. So thank you, Jan, for being an amazing volunteer that others can look up to. So on behalf of the City of Olympia Parks Department, I want to give you this award and certificate for all that you did and do.
I'm curious.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'll keep it brief. I have a ball out there. I spend so many hours in Watershed Park. I hardly see anybody, but I see salamanders and birds and all that sort of thing. And there's a reference to marathoning. Well, pulling ivy is an endurance sport, too. There's an ivy patch I've been working on for a year and a half, and I think within a year I will have that done. So anyone who wants to have a great time in all weathers, see all the plants, all the animals, et cetera, become a Park Steward and join me. Thanks.
Thank you.
The staff is so supportive. It is totally fabulous. So thank you, Jennifer.
Love our parks. All right. Thanks, thanks for the pitch, and maybe that's how you can also wrap up, is telling us how people can get involved in our Volunteers in Parks Program.
Sure. So we have a volunteer website. It's at olympia.volunteerwa.gov. You can also, you're welcome to call our office anytime. You can call Amy, myself. You can find Jan. I'm sure you could find him out there. But anything can be found on our website. If you don't know, you're always welcome to call anyone in the city, and they'll get us to you as well. But being a Park Steward is a wonderful thing, and, and I look forward to going to work every single day because of the stewards and the people I work with. So thank you very much.
Thank you to Jennifer and Amy. Any other comments from the dais this evening? Thank you. A great evening. All right. So we are on to, something doesn't have a two number on it, and that is public comment for this evening. So we've got about eighteen, nineteen people signed up, and we have about a half hour, well, a half hour allotted at the beginning of our business meetings for public comment. If you signed up, I'm assuming you read the, the rules. It's basically three minutes. You can speak to items that are on the agenda, but we ask that you not speak to anything that we've held a public hearing on, or any topic that we've held a public hearing on in the last forty-five days, or have scheduled in the coming forty-five days. And as well, it's that time of year again, so we can't allow speakers to promote or oppose a candidate for public office or a ballot measure. So we have three minutes. My countdown clocks over to the right, so we can get through as many people. I'm going to call out three names at a time, and you can stage yourselves over here behind the podium. So I'll start with Ann Ben Swearingen, followed by Chris Sterns, followed by Izzy Baldo.
My name is Ann Ben Swearingen. I'm a wildlife biologist and environmental planner. Live in northeast neighborhood. First, please tell the city to, can you hear me? Okay.
Move the mic down a little bit. Thank you.
To, to stop running up legal costs and go back to the drawing board and work with neighborhood groups to develop zoning plans. Come up with a plan that addresses environmental impacts. Future land use changes will be substantial. From oh-one to 2051, U.S. land use will expand by, expand by seventy-nine percent. Refinement of the city's zoning plans would greatly benefit from more detailed environmental information. These factors were not addressed by the city's SEPA analysis. Perhaps you've heard, in our lifetimes, North America lost more than a quarter of its avifauna, nearly three billion birds. In Washington State, ninety-two climate-endangered birds face the highest risk of extirpation or local extinction from climate change. These species may lose more than half of their habitat by 2050. Many backyard favorites are also losing ground. Next to climate change, urbanization and land use change are the largest, most pervasive current threats to plants, animals, insects, and their habitats. Birds face too many challenges today to further shrink more forests, marine, wetlands, grasslands, and backyard habitats on which they rely. Many birds live in and use the City of Olympia as a migration route. Birds use microhabitats for breeding, nesting, and feeding. Habitat corridors and native tree and shrub patches lower the impacts of forest fragmentation. The city can protect and map microhabitats as miniature heat sinks. Pole after pole shows support for open spaces with tree shrubs and other vegetation by residents and neighborhoods worldwide. Natural ecosystems have enormous, enormous potential to contribute to the city's resilience against climate change. Good planning is needed to protect birds, wildlife, and Olympians, and the city can become an important player in climate change governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Sterns, followed by Izzy Baldo, followed by Linda Ann Moniz.
Hello. My name is Chris Sterns. I am currently serving as the Thurston County PUD Commissioner, although my comments are mostly involving neighborhood perspectives, and my views don't reflect the Board or the institution of Thurston PUD. I'm concerned about public process. I've just been through one with rates and charges over a couple of nights in Lacy Community Center. And when public process is abrogated or quality feedback from the public and it's stakeholders that are reflecting on the, you know, the decisions you folks make as a council, it's important that the public process be obeyed and utilized and not neglected or ignored. And I think the missing middle situation doesn't look like it's even had a public hearing, and that disturbs me as a neighborhood association member, that people are not given, allowed a conduit to express their feelings or concerns, and perhaps modify the results that you guys are making. I've got an instance here of lawyers gone, gone wild. You know, the people that are bringing you to court are dragged through unnecessary motions. This is lawyers gone wild with your staff, and they insulate you from knowing what's going on. Sounds like they're in control of you rather than the other way around, which is what it should be. That's the way I treat my lawyers in my board. So I'm disappointed at that, hearing about that. There's a certain capacity for growth in downtown Olympia. We haven't had growth extensively for quite a while. Now we've had quite a bit of it. I deal with capacities all the time, piping, water systems, digging up streets, just like you guys do. I try to work together with cities when I can, or the county. But we know that there are bottlenecks in this town. The West Side is concerned about the Fourth Avenue Bridge. Development on the Is Smiths has accelerated that concern, when people advocated for a park, which many councilors were elected for one time long ago. So I just want to point out to you guys that when you allow growth to go on, you need to think about the impacts. And there's a reason for that, because the impacts will affect the quality of life here in Olympia, and will affect how people get in and out, transit it, and how everything else, including the infrastructure, works. We all know Seattle has outgrown its infrastructure. We don't need to do it here. Believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Izzy Baldo, followed by Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Ricky, can't, I can't read, Tyrone? Can't read your last name.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Izzy Baldo, and for the last twenty-seven years, Olympia's been my home. And for the last sixteen of those years, I've proudly served our community as a registered nurse. In my role as a nurse, I've seen, been a firsthand witness to the growing emergency that it is the consequence of unaffordable, fragmented, and inequitable health insurance system. Olympians via many routes, including city government and budgets, try to serve those most vulnerable to this system, our homeless brothers and sisters, those who are drug-dependent, suffering mental illness, or members of our undocumented community. What doesn't always make the headlines as dramatically are the forty million Americans who have health insurance but can't afford the skyrocketing premiums, deductibles, co-pays, and prescription drug costs. I feel helpless when patients have admitted to me that they ration medication, or delay primary care due to cost, and I see the cost both in human suffering and financial burden. Providence Health Services of southwestern Washington released its most recent biennial community health needs assessment for 2017-2019, and it said eleven percent of Thurston County residents in that time delayed seeking health care due to cost, including six percent of pregnant Thurston women obtaining no or late prenatal care, with a disproportionate amount of negative outcomes affecting people of color. I know the City of Olympia Council cannot, as an individual body, fix this broken system. It's too big. It exists in every pocket of America. But after many years of helping people navigate not just their health care, but its financial cost, I now realize the only system, realize the only systemic and far-reaching solution is a single-payer, universal health care system. Opponents of this will say it's altruism. I counter that by saying a system that serves everyone and is paid for by the wealth generated not by our CEOs in this country, but by the laborers of this nation, is actually pragmatic. A healthy populace not burdened by crushing health care debt can only be a productive populace. What I am asking of our community's council is to vocally support a national health care system. Use your platform to increase the discussion so that the county, state, and federal elected officials know the majority of Americans now demand health care for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Ann Moniz, Ricky, last name starts with T, Matt, and then Matt Stusky.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here to talk about the unsanctioned camp being under the Fourth Avenue Bridge. I am aware that not all homeless people have drug addictions. However, drug addiction is preying on the truly homeless and disabled. Drug addiction is preying on this city. I've only heard these campers complain about what the city is not giving to them. This council is allowing these homeless persons to govern themselves. Is this a good idea to let a group of people with addictions and behavioral issues govern them, govern themselves? This, to me, is very dangerous. The ideology that the homeless crisis is because of economics has yet to be explained to the working families. We are considered to be privileged because we have a place to live, but we do our part to function in this society. We work, we donate, we volunteer, we stay privileged homeless now they can prey on us. Instead of challenging the community to do their part, challenge the Fourth Avenue Bridge campers to do theirs. This council could also do their part by being good stewards for the hard-working taxpayers. Let's all try to make a difference in this struggling community. This council had a plan in motion to clear the Fourth Avenue Bridge encampment because of safety and sanitary concerns two weeks ago. Many spent months working on resources. All one council member had to do was pull a stunt, and it was over. You, the council members, have betrayed your own staff and the City of Olympia. This council is prioritizing twenty to thirty people over a whole community. Let's move forward. Is there a timeline on clearing residents from the Fourth Avenue Bridge encampment? This can't take a year, as I believe Councilmember Jones suggested. Winter will be here soon. The residents from the Fourth Avenue Bridge encampment, after being placed in a safer environment, could show their appreciation to the city by going back to the bridge to help clean, maybe even paint. Giving back makes everyone feel good and would have a positive effect on this community. I've also attached a letter that was written to the First Christian Church, giving a different perspective and views. If you just take a couple minutes in the future to read those, I'll leave it with Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky, followed by Matt Stusky, followed by Isaac Wagner.
Hi. My name is Ricky Thomas. I'm homeless. I've been down here for about almost four years. I'm going through this thing called targeting, where I have petitioned the mayor and the city council a couple of years ago. Starting again, where the staff is either at the Providence Center, or the Mission, or at the church we go to on a Sunday, where they hear all these verbal death threats and harassment comments, but they don't do nothing about it. I'm a member of the NAACP Tacoma chapter, and when I'm telling the staff what's going on, and they hear the verbal threat, they're kind of like, oh, well, who's making them? But they're, they're right in front of you. And so I was wondering if you folks, city council, could like tighten up security, get security and Salvation Army, Union Gospel, the Women's Center, because nobody needs to go through these death threats. A death threat is a criminal offense where it should go past the police department. That's FBI matter down here. Investigated for the NAACP. Investigator for the N double A C P, he said, Mr. Police, go ahead and call the FBI, because this has been brought to your attention before, but continue to happen in these places I go. I'm also a client at Special Services at the Governor's Office. And so I got a gentleman, one of the staff members at the Salvation Army, he said he'll speak on it, because I told him he won't lose his job. He's just, how you say, he conformed to his surroundings, but he will speak on it as long as he don't lose his job. So I'm petitioning that you folks back him up, because tomorrow I'm gonna go to the Governor's Office, because I had enough. I'm 50, 59 years old. I was looking at 57 years. It's just too much. It's just too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Stusky, followed by Isaac Wagner, followed by Wendy Tanowitz.
Hi. My name is Matt, and you just heard from one of my comrades, Izzy, who mentioned that a recent study had one in nine people in Thurston County deferring their health care treatment because they couldn't afford it. And when I first heard that a couple of months ago, my, my heart really sank, because that's something I have personal experience with. When I was 18, just before the passage of the ACA, I was diagnosed with cancer, and I also faced the decision to defer receiving treatment because I was ineligible for insurance and couldn't afford it. And let me tell you, I've never felt more helpless or terrified in my life than when I was spending those months sitting there, waiting for circumstances to change so I could get the treatment that I needed. And, you know, obviously, things got better for me. A few months later, the ACA was passed, and I was eligible to get on insurance, and, you know, I'm here, so I was, I was fortunate, I made it. But it's clear that 10 years later, things have not improved enough. One in nine people are still trapped, still unable to get the treatment they need because they can't afford it. That's one in nine of our friends, or our family, or neighbors. It's, it's heartbreaking, really. It's clear to me that subsidies and Band-Aids aren't going to cut it, and I think a growing number of people agree that we need real change and we need universal health care. And I hope that the city council will stand with us and affirm that all people have a right to health care treatment and, you know, come out in support of universal health care and Medicare for All. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Wagner, followed by Wendy Tanowitz, followed by Pat Tesoni.
Thank you. I'd like to also encourage the council to give their support to the idea of universal health care in this country. I've lived in this community for 20 years, and the longer I've lived here, the more I've seen a lot of suffering happen that doesn't need to, and a lot of that is because people can't make ends meet, and a lot of that is because health care is becoming a thing that can just bankrupt you for a crime, for the crime of only being sick or injured. And if we're going to call ourselves a civilized society, we can't allow that to continue happening. I know this is a national issue that the council can't directly impact in terms of policy, but showing that we understand the true causes of the problems facing our community and giving moral support to real solutions, I think, has a very important symbolic value. And we should consider, too, how much this rebounds upon other issues of economic hardship. I think the housing issue, there wouldn't be so many people, I suspect, who couldn't find a place to live if it wasn't so easy, again, to just be bankrupted merely by dint of becoming ill. I think people need to realize that health care is a human right, and we, as a city, should add our voice to that call. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Tanowitz, followed by Pat Tesoni, followed by T J Johnson.
My name is Wendy Tanowitz. I live in Olympia. It was very interesting to me to hear the, about the first slave in Washington and how he escaped, and also how we haven't advanced the dial that much. And that's what I'm here to talk about. After Andre and Bryson were shot, there were a lot of community meetings talking about racism, and I got to speak with a lot of black people and learn about their experiences, and I was totally shocked. Unbelievable. People being stopped because they had dust on their license plate. My friend's son had an Olympia cop pull a gun on him because she said one of his lights was off. He said, what have I done? Don't kill me. And she said, one of your, your lights was off. It's, it's quite serious. But what I'm here to talk about today is the death of Yvonne McDonald and how it has not been properly investigated. And I don't think the fact that she is black is immaterial to this. I think it's quite material. And it turns out she also had a problem with alcohol. So being black and having a problem with alcohol, she could, she was easily dismissed as not being worthy of having her death investigated. It turns out, from what I understand, that the street sweeper, I think his name's Henry Morales, was never interviewed, and he was the first person to have found her body. There was a lot of inconsistency in all the reports. Actually, I, I filed a public records request on her death, and I was, I was told that the medical, none of the important information was available, just saying. Her family has not been extensively interviewed. It was just assumed that since she had an open bottle of alcohol on her, that she was an alcoholic, and again, not worthy of having her death investigated. We want it investigated. We want an external investigation. We think what's been done is totally inadequate by the coroner, by the prosecutor, by the city manager, and by the city council, and we really want to see some action on this. The case is still open. It hasn't been decided what exactly happened to her, but it's basically a case of blaming the victim, and we want to see that changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Got Pat Tesoni, followed by T J Johnson, followed by Talana Reed.
Hi. I'm Pat Tesoni. I'm a cisgendered, straight, white man with disabilities, third, fourth generation immigrant to this continent, from Europe's, and first-generation immigrant to the stolen area, the sea peoples. So I want to thank them for their hospitality. I'm a product of the local segregated school system. I am Antifa and propertyless. I am 50-year survivor of capitalism and fully expect to be an economic and/or climate refugee, if not fatality, in the next 10 years. For the last 20 years, I've been an occupant of the territorial area county courthouse, where it's likely Charles Mitchell himself visited at some point. I was enthralled in the, with the uncovering of the news of Charles Mitchell and the update that we had here this evening. That was great. I recently bought the book, After Charlottesville, and it came from St. Louis, which means something extra, too, since that's the home of the Dred Scott decision and the epicenter of Black Lives Matter. How smart and brave this kid, Charles Mitchell, was to make his own future, since by his very action, he demonstrated he could not count on his southern slave master or the rest of complicit white settler Olympia to help him make his name his own. The year previous to his liberation, Oregon achieved statehood. A main architect and full-fledged white supremacist of that constitution, who this county was named after, wanted to strip land rights from the indigenous peoples from the Pacific Ocean to the Rocky Mountains, set up land grants only eligible for whites, and to banish African-Americans from their new state. That is the backdrop that also forced African-Americans, George Washington Bush, to come to now Washington, and George Washington to found Centralia. And let us also mention York, an African-American forced to accompany Lewis and Clark here and back into slavery, and all those untold, unknown stories of unnamed bravery since 1492 and 1619. But let us forget the names of the racist bastards. Finally, I think how fitting to make Charles Mitchell a role model today when we have teenage climate strikers at the same age, bravely and boldly going where no generation has gone before to secure a future for themselves. Just as one of the local high school students said last week on the Capitol steps, "We don't need a permission slip to secure a future for ourselves." Neither did Charles Mitchell. Thank you, Councilmember Rollins, for making this proclamation happen. Let's say his name. Since the science predicts the landscape of this area, both ecological, socioeconomic will soon be different, we must listen to the climate strikers. Part of that is acknowledging truth and putting our house in order and addressing the past. We can no longer ignore the future as we've been ignoring the past.
Thank you.
It's not business as usual.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask the audience, I didn't give the, my little precursor to public comment, but we ask that there's no outbursts during public comment, because it needs to be a safe and respectful space for all views. So, thank you. I'm going to move on to, I've got T J Johnson, followed by Talana Reed.
Hello. My name is T J Johnson. I'm a resident of the urban growth area of Olympia. I'm a full-time farmer, and I am a member of the Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors and serve as the vice chair, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Conservation District. I want to talk to you about the Spooner Farm or Zahn parcel on Yelm Highway, 80 acres that the city is currently undergoing a master planning process for park development on. Several years ago, Thurston Regional Planning Council led a multi-year, $1.5 million planning effort to develop the Sustainable Thurston Plan. Many, many people in this community, including myself, participated in that effort, and the outcome was a really good sustainable development plan for Thurston County, which was approved by this city council and then incorporated in the comprehensive plan and other policies that the city has. And there were a lot of good goals in the Sustainable Thurston Plan, and I want to highlight two of those. The first is around agricultural and local food systems. That process recognized that we've lost 75% of our farmland in Thurston County over the last 50 years, and most of the rest of the farmland was at risk of development. Just last week, the Board of County Commissioners heard that we've lost 14,000 acres of farmland, or 19% of our remaining farmland, in the last five years, 2012 to 2017, and that was double the rate of farmland loss compared to the previous five years. So we're continuing to lose farmland despite our goal of no net loss in Sustainable Thurston. The other issue is climate change. There was a lot of good goals on climate change in the Sustainable Thurston Plan, and the city has done a lot to highlight issues of climate change, particularly when it comes to sea level rise. But one of the issues that has not been addressed is the impact of climate change on food production. The United Nations earlier this year reported that we will lose 50% of the food production capacity on the planet by the middle of this century due to a combination of farmland loss, rising temperatures, lack of water, increasing pests and diseases, et cetera. So my question is, with adopted policies of no net loss of farmland and concerns over climate change and its impacts on food production, how can the city justify converting productive farmland into a park use? Now, let me be clear, I'm not against parks. I was on the city council when the Parks and Sidewalks measure was passed, put on the ballot, and I was a volunteer who knocked on many, many doors during that campaign to pass that measure. But this is just the wrong location for this park. And I've spoken to several of you as well, city staff, about this issue, and I'm frankly not finding much interest in the inconsistency between park development and our no net loss of farmland goal. So I ask you, are we serious about saving farmland? Are we serious about implementing this no net loss policy, which has already been adopted and incorporated into your policies? Earlier, councilmembers reminded us strong special recognition about the importance of history and where we've been and what history can teach us. Well, we're an agricultural community. We need to remember that. And I want to remind you that the Thurston Conservation District is ready to work with you to figure out ways to maintain agricultural use on the Zahn parcel.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We need to save time for, we've got time for one more speaker now, and that will be Talana Reed, and then we will continue with the rest of the list after our business.
Excuse me. Good evening, council. My name is Talana Reed. I am the eldest niece, niece of Yvonne McDonald. It's been 414 days since this African-American woman's murder in West Olympia. It's been 9,940 hours since I got to hear her say she loved me and hear her laugh. I will not let the city off the hook for refusing to properly investigate her death. The only valid reason not to investigate a crime is if police know who did it. Mayor Selby and this council are responsible for appointing three positions. In fact, your handbook says it's your obligatory responsibility to appoint a city manager, hearing examiner, and police auditor. Is it in the city's best interest to leave the police auditor position vacant for nine years? According to the City of Olympia Council, Councilmember's Handbook, Section 2.4.1, under number three, you are to supervise appointed officials, appointed officials, and police auditor is one of them, and you're not supervising one because you don't have one. The city also needs a civilian review board now, not next year, not next week, now, more than we need a Charles Mitchell day. My aunt's murder investigation was half, was at best half-assed. Evidence was not collected or was destroyed. There are no chain of custody reports. Not one photo is timestamped or dated. There are zero photos of Yvonne's injuries up close. Yvonne was never treated as a victim. There was one male officer dispatched at the lowest priority to assist, to the aid of a naked woman unconscious. Yvonne was brain-dead when she got to the hospital. It took almost one hour to begin transporting her to the hospital. Evidence was not preserved, tagged, measured. Protocol wasn't followed. None of, none of you found it suspicious that Henry Morales's vehicle had to be repaired because of, because of external damage? Washington state law mandates that police officers render first aid. Jordan Reischer never even touched my aunt, never checked her pulse. No FEMA officer or medic was ever called. All three men who had contact with her all said three different things about where they found her. She was in, wearing three different amounts of clothing. She was in three different positions. And one said, one said she was sleeping, one said she was overdosed, one said she was drunk. Her personal items were moved supposedly after the street sweeper left from the curb, left them by the curb before the officer got there. This is, this is uncalled for. Detective Al Welling's narrative contradicts Jordan Reischer's sworn statement. One or all of these men are liars. Detective Jeff Herbig signed off on all this. Everything needs to be investigated. This day means nothing unless there's justice for Yvonne McDonald. Period.
Thank you. So that completes our first half hour of public comment. I'll leave it up to the council. Do you want to give remarks now, or do you want to wait till we're done with all of our public commenters? Anybody want to get to say anything right now, or? Said a yes? At the end? Okay. Great. Well, we will continue on with the rest of the list after we finish the business meeting section, which I'm going to go back to. Oh. At this point, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar. So moved?
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent calendar passes. I would just like to make a comment after, after the fact that we did approve just now item 4D, which is adoption of a resolution approving interim city manager employment agreement with our assistant city manager, Jay Bernie. So I just want to congratulate Jay and the council. Jay's been with the, the city for 20 years and city manager for 10. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we have both hands on the wheel, that the city's in great shape as we move forward. There's going to be a lot of robust discussion about potential forms of government and changes that could happen. We have a study session scheduled November 26, 5:30. It'll be livestreamed and taped. You can also come in and watch us as we learn about forms of government in Washington State. So with that, we can go on, I'm sorry, comment, Mayor for Tim Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just wanted to comment on item 4J, which is the repeal of ordinance utilizing a sales tax, House Bill, was based on House Bill 1406. In our eagerness to achieve getting some funds from the state for addressing affordable housing, we inadvertently didn't realize that we needed the county to go first in order for them to have the ability to collect money for affordable housing. So we will still be doing that in the future. It just has to be repealed so the county can do that, so they can capture that money, and it will come to us at a future city council meeting.
Thanks for that clarification. Anybody else have any comments on tonight's consent calendar? Okay, we are moving on to other business, item 6A, which is one of our other favorite subjects, parking. And just want to thank Max Dejarnet for taking on the heavy mantle of figuring out parking for Olympia. And last time we had an update, we adopted the updated parking strategy in April 2019, so this is an update for 2020.
That's correct.
And with that, I'd like to welcome our parking program analyst, Max Dejarnet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. For the record, my name is Max Dejarnet. I'm Community Planning and Development's Parking Program Analyst. I'm here tonight to kick off our communication and outreach campaign to inform the public about changes coming to the about changes coming to the downtown parking system in 2020. So what we know based upon public surveys and workshops with stakeholders is that our community really cares about parking, and so do we. So that's why the city responded with the development and ultimate adoption of the updated downtown parking strategy. Adopted, as you mentioned, in April this year, the parking strategy is a blueprint to guide staff to respond to the rapidly changing downtown landscape. Its implementation is meant to support our community's downtown strategy as well as the larger comprehensive plan. The parking strategy is broken into seven categories, and each category addresses different aspects of our parking system. Together, these strategies will ensure that our parking system can support our growing and changing downtown. So to the specific updates we're beginning our outreach for, some of these updates are administrative and some will require council approval. For those changes requiring council approval, you can expect ordinance updates to review later this year. The bulk of these updates are scheduled to roll out at the start of the new year. The most noticeable change and which will require the greatest amount of outreach are the meter and permit price increases. You should have a table in the staff report that outline the specific increases. And I just want to note a couple of things here. Meter payments represent 60% of the total revenue available to fund the commitments made in the parking strategy, yet meter prices haven't increased since the Corps returned to paid parking in 2011, and downtown is in increasing need of parking investments. Our intent is to revisit meter and permit prices once a year to ensure that we're covering both our operating costs and longer-term commitments while maintaining our target occupancy of 85%. Similarly, with parking citations, the city last increased citations in 2007, and staff will be recommending an increase from $15 to $20 for expired meter citations, which is on par with those issued at the Capitol campus. As part of the strategy to implement pay-by-phone system-wide, we'll be adding more pay-by-phone options for our off-street leased lots. We'll also pursue a parking kiosk pilot near Heritage Park as we replace long-term meters with shorter-term parking. The intent is to improve walkability and reduce sidewalk clutter while reducing our maintenance costs. Staff will also be informing downtown stakeholders about an improved immobilization device called the Barnacle to replace the boot, which increases officer safety as well as improves customer service. And then finally, we'll be reaching out to our community about an ordinance limiting the amount of time a vehicle with a disabled placard may park for free at a meter from unlimited time to four hours. So as I mentioned, tonight marks the beginning of an outreach campaign. We have a forthcoming communications strategy to share with council, city leadership, customer service, and parking staff. We'll be reaching out to businesses by presenting to the Olympia Downtown Alliance membership as well as the PBIA, and visiting storefronts with information packets. We'll be communicating directly with our parking customers with letters and emails, as well as connecting with our disabled community with the assistance of advocacy groups and state agencies. I recognize a few people enjoy learning that their or their customers' parking prices will be increasing, but downtown really is rapidly changing, and meeting the increasing parking demands require these adjustments. So please look forward to the forthcoming communications strategy packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have tonight. Thanks.
All right. Quick question, these rate, potential rate increases, are they online now, or are they, you're going to wait until you do all the other outreach?
So they're not yet online. Our intent was to bring this here first.
Launch it right now.
To council, and then work on those outreach strategies.
Okay, so I just want to really confirm that nothing has been approved yet by this council, this is all just beginning of the outreach?
That's correct. And, and we're, you know, because folks need to plan, we really need to get out ahead of this, but of course, council, for many of these, will have the opportunity to review the ordinance updates. Specifically, for instance, the residential permit, permits, those are by ordinance, as well as the Barnacle that I described and the...
I want to see a picture of the Barnacle.
I'll follow up with you. It's fantastic.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gilman.
Max, thank you for the report. Could you describe a little bit more the, the relationship between managing increased demand and, and how increased rates for parking help to manage that demand?
Sure. Well, it's a sort of fundamental tenet of parking management, that as your demand increases for, for parking availability, then you, it leads to congestion, and really the best way to mitigate that congestion is to increase your rates just enough so that you can reliably have one space available on each parking block. That's a level of nuance that Olympia is not yet at, but that's our target.
So other cities have found that 25 cents an hour more will discourage some folks from staying as long or from parking, and that'll free up parking stalls, is that...
That's the idea, and, and with our recommendation with that 25 cent increase, it's, it's occupancy, because we are seeing in our analysis that the downtown core is very congested, especially during peak hours, but it's also about our operating costs, and because we haven't had these price adjustments and are increasing operating expenses, we really do need to make up some ground that we haven't over the last decade or so.
Great, that's helpful. And then when we spoke in land use, we talked about a couple of, examples would be Boardwalk and the Fleetwood Building, where for many years, folks have parked on the street with handicap placards long-term, so I'm hoping that those situations will be a specific part of the outreach, trying to figure out how people who have long-term parked with the handicap placard will find a new place for their vehicle.
Yeah, that's right. Our, our hope is to really roll those parkers into our residential, our downtown residential program.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
So for clarification, this has been through land use? Excellent, and I think it's also good to do outreach to the SHAG residents as well.
Yeah.
Anybody? Anybody going, going? All right, well, we look forward to the, the big communication rollout, because, as we know, everybody has a very strong opinion about parking fees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Max. All right, so that all went quicker than I had imagined, so we'll have lots of time for council reports tonight, right? Right now, we need to go back to public communication and go back to the list. I've got, same rules apply, three minutes. Terrence McDonald followed by Thomas Annie.
Hello, I'm Terrence McDonald, oldest nephew of Yvonne McDonald. I think my little sister said it best, but what's been weighing heavy on me is, the last time I was here, one of you up there said that my aunt's death was because of her lifestyle, and I really, it's been troubling me because I don't believe none of you knew her, so I really don't know how you could say that's because of her lifestyle. And if her skin color had been the same color as yours, would her death have been an accident? A coincidence, maybe? I don't know, but it seems like these three months, there's no progress being made. My little sister stressed out over this whole issue, when you guys can just do what's right, look into it, get it done, take the proper steps, do what needs to be done. I seen on the news for like, what, a month and a half, this dude was running around killing cats? You guys publicized that for I don't know how long, and that cat got more respect than my aunt got? Get it together, man.
Thank you. Thomas Annie followed by Gracie Stallings.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Annie, I'm a Olympia resident, I'm a homeowner in Northwest Olympia, I'm a teacher, I'm a small business owner, and I'm a father. And I, I wanted to talk about Yvonne McDonald, and I, I don't know if I have anything new to say about that, just to express that I'm appalled at the way the city and the county has just shrugged their shoulders and stonewalled the family. Yvonne McDonald deserves better than that, and Olympia deserves better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracie Stallings followed by Mallory Kennedy.
Hi there, I'm Gracie. I'm a new member to the community of Olympia, and I was utterly disgusted to learn of the lack of accountability that the Olympia Police Department, as well as so-called Thurston County leaders, have had in the complete disregard for the murder of Yvonne McDonald, as folks have already spoken to this evening. I'd like to read a wanted poster that's been posted around town, that's asking for people to be held accountable. "Yvonne McDonald, who was killed under suspicious circumstances on August 7, 2018, was a member of our community, and her family demands justice. All of these individuals have been presented with evidence that contradicts, contradicts the false police narratives in her case file. This case has not been properly investigated, and her cause of death has been wrongfully classified as undetermined by this county's coroner. These individuals clearly do not believe that Black Lives Matter as they seemingly continue to protect one of their own. While family members have spent countless hours gathering evidence and coming up with a reasonable explanation as to what may have happened to their loved one, these government officials have stood by and allowed evidence to be destroyed. They refuse to hold police officers and paramedics accountable for their negligence and handling the sloppy investigation. Instead of providing proper medical attention, first responders, police, and paramedics spent their time covering up the circumstances that caused Yvonne McDonald's deadly injuries. Corruption is at the heart of the Olympia Police Department and Thurston County Prosecutor and Coroner's Office and needs to be stopped. We all want these individuals to resign immediately from their positions. We need the death of Yvonne McDonald to be properly investigated. Justice must be served, and the individuals that caused the fatal injuries and those that failed to provide her with a proper medical treatment that may have saved her life need to be prosecuted."
That's all. Thank you. Mallory Kennedy followed by Izzy Lemay.
Hello, so I'm going to skip the introduction because I've been here a few times, so maybe you guys remember me. So I'm going to speak a little bit about what my friend Talana already spoke about, the vacancy of the police auditor. So when looking over the municipal code, it literally took me like two seconds to find this information that you guys are responsible for appointing a city manager, which we all know you did that, because Steve Hall was in his position for, what, he was assistant city manager for 10 years, and then, you know, city manager for like 13. So we know you're pretty good at doing that, right? He was so good that you kept him around that long, right? And so now, there's also the hearings examiner, and then the police auditor. So someone might say like, oh, the reason we don't have a police auditor is because, you know, it's not really that effective, right? Because, you know, it's really tough to investigate the police. Well, it's actually your job to hire somebody that has, you know, integrity, and somebody that you guys are supposed to hold accountable to ensure that they are doing their job in auditing the police and investigating the police. They're also supposed to, and this again is in your code, so you can probably maybe read that. So they, sorry, I'm going to read it exactly from here. So some of their qualifications, minimum qualifications required, the first one is a history of exemplary personal and professional conduct and integrity. The second, the ability to establish a broad base of credibility in the community, and then it goes on to speak about the trust that that can help instill in your community, because right now, you don't have it, okay? We don't trust you, we don't trust the police department. We don't trust these people that you have put in charge to protect and serve us. They are literally doing quite the opposite, and I think you know that. And so maybe if you guys could hire a police auditor, maybe we could get some of this taken care of and get some trust instilled back in all of you. And maybe we could even find out what happened to Yvonne McDonald, and we also would like to formally request, again, an external investigation into what happened to Yvonne. Thank you.
Thank you. Izzy Lemay followed by Peter Bomer.
Hi, I'm Izzy Lemay, I'm here in support of McDonald's family. There are still answers that they are demanding. Why did a city employee 20 years on the job leave her alone? Why didn't he call 911 like the detective reported? Why was one male cop dispatched at the aid of a naked woman? How did Ms. Morales observe her chest rise and fall from 15 feet away? Why did he respond with, "I don't know, this is anyone's fault," when asked if he knew what happened? Why did coroner Gary Warnock lie about toxicology? Who moved her belongings from where Morales said they were left when he left? Why wasn't the dented mailbox kept from evidence? Where did the damages come from on the right side of the sweeper? Where did the unmentioned bloodstained jean jacket, paramedics threw over her, where was her underwear, her house keys, her bank card? Why did it take an hour for her to get to the hospital? Why was she left on the ground and not covered properly by paramedics? Why is the manner of her death being kept hidden from her family? And many more. There are so many discrepancies and contradictions between the first responders and law enforcement. The unwillingness of the city manager, the police detective, and the coroner to complete a thorough and truthful investigation and ignore crucial facts is very disturbing. This community must continue to put pressure on the city council and county officials to do their job." Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Bomer? He's left. Kyle Wild? Kyle Wild.
My name is Kyle Wild, and thank you for hearing me. First, I just wanted to say thank you to Olympia City Council members, Just Housing, and all the others who advocate to end homelessness. The effort and work involved to make it easier for those who want to have a better life, to have doors thrown wide open and unobstructed paths to walk down in order to have that better life, is a show of utmost compassion and community solidarity that will heal a segregated nation, our nation. For are we not a nation of unity? Because what I have experienced is the segregated states of America. It's time to put aside social class segregation and become a United States of America. Only by being stronger together can we rise above, all for one and one for all. That being said, tonight, I want to raise awareness to the public and point the fact to the law enforcement and city and state officials and the homeless about the Washington Homestead Act. After the meeting, I can provide more information on this RCW, but for now, I just want to point out the protections this Washington constitutional law guarantees that citizens and the, the personal property they use as a residence. Under the RCW code titled 613, homeless people who live in their vehicles or RVs can claim it as a homestead, personal property in which they call home, and thus will be protected from having a lien or attachment placed on it, especially vehicles impounded per city parking ordinances. This, this protects the homeless from losing their home due to excessive fee or fines placed on it, which I might add is protected under the Eighth Amendment Excessive Fees Clause. In fact, a case can be argued against initial impound in the first place thanks to the protections of the Homestead Act. See the case law, Stephen Long versus City of Seattle. In fact, you can watch my case on the 11th of October, in which I will attempt to protect my car, which I have declared a homestead in the county auditor's office, from being sold at auction due to the unbearable fees attached to it. Here's a brief excerpt from RCW 613-070. Article 19, Section 1 via RCW 613-070 protects a person's home against forced sale or attachment. When the legislature enacted RCW 613 to comply with the state constitutional provision which states, "The legislature shall protect by law from forced sale a certain portion of the homestead and other property of all heads of families." The legislature used the following language. "The homestead consists of real personal property that the owner uses as a residence. Ignorance of the law is not an excuse." Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. Any response from the dais? Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'd like to thank, I think they left, but the folks that came in and advocated for Medicare for all and actually showed us some of the numbers of our local community, which is extremely concerning that 1 in 9 people in our community are actually delaying their health care based on the fact that it's difficult for them to pay for it. We know that the Affordable Care Act expanded health coverage to many Americans, but there are still 30 million Americans that do not have... are still 30 million Americans that do not have health insurance, and there are millions more that are cost burdened because they can't afford to, or they're delaying care because the expense is so high. I'm really optimistic, I'm hopeful that we have numerous presidential candidates that are currently, and a couple of them have actually signed on to Medicare for All, and others, including Kamala Harris and Pete Buttigieg, have proposed plans for types of universal health care. It's clear that the status quo is not working and that we need to work to get universal health care for all Americans. I'd also like to thank the constituents that came forward and spoke for the need for a police auditor. I agree with you. We absolutely do need to have one. It's been far too long. Councilmember Lisa Partially and I both sit on finance. The chair, Jim Cooper, is not here tonight, but I will make sure that that comes forward as we approach our budget-making season, so we can propose that for our budget, so we can have one to help instill trust in our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rollins followed by Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak out in support of requesting an external investigation into Yvonne McDonald's death. I think that there's a lot of questions obviously have been raised over the last year, and the answers that have come from our institution and the report haven't been satisfactory. Ultimately, I'm not a specialist in, I'm not an investigator myself, and my thinking on this question has evolved over the last few months, and mainly it's because I'm not a specialist. My opinion really doesn't matter when the problem is about accountability and trust and community relations. And so to me, it would be a sign of our organization taking a step in humility and accepting that fact that we have a relation and a trust problem, and having an outside entity take a look at how the investigate, really how things went from the moment that she was found in August last year and what the investigation has stated. I think there are some differing descriptions about where she was cited on that property, on division, and different descriptions of the state of her clothing. Enough questions that would lead just a reasonable, independent person to not be certain. And I just don't believe that the answers are going to, that credible answers are going to come from our institution again. And it's not just because of Yvonne McDonald's death, it's because of Andrean Bryson, Tyrone Johnson. There's a long history of incidences that have caused mistrust. So I think that would be helpful. As to the police auditor position, we actually brought up the same question, I think, in my first month or two on council. And I'm not certain that it would provide as much as it sounds like it does, but we did. I do believe that Jim, that, excuse me, that councilmember Cooper, I thought he said he was holding some space in the budget to fill that position, but it's fairly limited in what it looks at. It pretty much looks at what was the, it's about internal affairs, if I'm correct. And maybe Jake, would you actually mind speaking to that position?
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, you know, the institutional knowledge of the history of the police auditor position. I think it got cut in the Great Recession.
Correct.
And also after the Ad Hoc Committee on Community Policing was formed after the officer-involved shooting of Andre and Bryson, they came back with a recommendation that, fill in the blanks, I'm so sorry.
Well, I don't know that I'm going to be a ton of help on this because my memory's a little fuzzy, kind of putting all the pieces back together. I do know that we had a police auditor back when I started at the city some years ago. It was a cut during the recessionary period. Their job at that point in time was fairly limited. They didn't look at every police investigation. They looked at internal affairs types complaints and reviewed those to see if proper actions were taken by officers around internal affairs types complaints. But that was the scope of their work when they were here. And then I'd have to go back and look specifically to find out all the recommendations that came out of the Ad Hoc Committee in terms of their recommendations. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Thank you. So we can get back to our community on
Absolutely.
Those items? And Mayor Protem Bateman?
Since it's been a number of years since that position was filled, I'm curious if there are additional responsibilities that a police auditor could have, and if there are examples of that more than what you've described. So if you could get back to that.
Yeah, I can get back to you on all that.
And Councilmember Rollins?
It might be helpful to have that position being part of overseeing I-940 implementation.
That's the recent legislation, the de-escalation. Thank you.
Yeah, so that would, there's some possible structural changes that we need to look at, but as far as Yvonne McDonald's death, I agree that an external investigation would be a way to move forward. And my goal, I've been asked like what outcome I'm looking for. I don't think there is a predetermined outcome, I think, but I'm looking for better community relations. And, you know, there's, a lot of times it's more comfortable for institutions to do that by having like police officers playing basketball with kids or going on walks, and that's like, that's a great relationship-building thing, but there's more required. And that's what I'm asking for. Other topics, oh, TJ Johnson's not here anymore, right? Did he leave? So I just, I wanted to amplify what TJ was saying as well from the Thurston Conservation District Board. I've been calling for, looking for re-envisioning how we think of our parks in the city, and I've had these conversations with other councilmembers and with Steve Hall and with Laura in the Parks Department, but seeing parks as a resource in combating climate change. And I just, I have a two-year-old nephew, and I just keep thinking, kids aren't going to be wondering why they don't have more soccer fields, they're going to be wondering why they don't have food. So I fully support that, taking a look at that space as maintaining our food systems and it could be a creative way to do, I mean, it can be park, like a playground and food, but I just think putting astroturf on a working agricultural property, I don't personally support. I know there's a community process. I just hope that part of that community process is looking at parks in that context. And I think that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I wanted to reiterate that there is a public process on input on the future of the Zahn Spooner property. Everything's on the table. There's definitely, you know, we went into the purchase of that property, understanding what it fit into as far as our whole spectrum of park offerings. So there's opportunity for other parks to also have community gardens on them. On that one is a large enough plot that I think actually one of the preliminary kind of rough layouts that they showed us did include a community garden piece and potentially a garden stand for Spooners. The majority of that property right now isn't used for agriculture as much as it's seen as. It's a U-PIC, but Spooners' majority of their growing for their other operations is done on a different piece of land. But all good input, and that's why we reach out to our community. You can go to the city website, and you can give feedback on the future of that piece of property. All right, see anything else? Okay, we're going to go to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Gilman, kept looking down there.
I just wanted to offer that I'm interested in drafting a resolution around the vocally supporting a federal solution for single-payer universal health care for all. And I would welcome if somebody else wants to work with me on that.
All right. Just a point of process, do you want to do that as a go-through the referral process? So you work with staff, or is this something you'd want to draft and bring forward to council? I want some clarification on what you're doing.
Sure. Well, I guess I would open it up. In something like this, that's largely symbolic, we could have a staff review, but I think it would, I think it would be pretty efficient to use templates that other cities are passing, tailor it a little bit. But if somebody else feels strongly that we should have a staff or a committee draft it first, I'm open to that.
I think you also just triggered a little bit of a question when you said it's purely symbolic because we don't have control over the national, the federal
Right.
...legislation. I'd actually like to work with our congressional district representative, Danny Heck's office. If we're going to bring something forward, make sure that they can also get behind it too and work with them?
Well, that may or may not work out.
Oh, okay. Well, I just think that to be strategic and productive rather than symbolic, that it really does work better to work within the people that represent you in Washington, D.C. But Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Councilmember Gilman, I'd be happy to work with you on that. I think that there is a way that we can articulate our values and the absolute need for universal health care, and I'd be really happy to explore language to articulate that and that value for, and what it means for our community to have people cost burdened with health care.
All right. And Councilmember Partially?
If I may, I'm just going to say, I'm not opposed to consulting Congressman Heck's office. I just think he's also made his position pretty clear in recent town hall meetings. So I'm not anticipating we'll convince him with this resolution.
I think that's why he needs to hear from us before we draft something. But, all right, Councilmember Partially?
I'm glad to hear us considering a resolution because I am for universal health care. It is one of the aspects we're going to have to tackle to settle our income inequality in this country. There's so many aspects of this income inequality that we have to work on. It's not just simply wages, taxes, it's health care, it's education, and the burden of education on certain members of our communities. So I'm for that, and I'll be interested to see what you guys come up with. I do think we need to push our congressman, and we need to make him understand that our community is interested in this in some manner. I am for a police auditor. I'd like to see what else and other descriptions and interpretations of our own code would indicate for that. And I know that Councilmember Cooper has brought and talked about this because Councilmember Rollins has asked for us to consider this in the budget.
All right. So we'll look forward to hearing back from our city manager, still Steve Hall, and Assistant City Manager Jay will relay that information, that we'd like to get an update and maybe a revisiting of the report from the Ad Hoc Committee on Community Policing, what the recommendation was.
I got it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. We are on to council reports. I've got a short mayor's report this evening. I wanted to revisit one of our public commenters from two weeks ago regarding the Buddy Walk to Raise Awareness of Down Syndrome in our community. And so that is going to be on Saturday, October 5th, and it's initiating the celebration of National Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So you can participate in that. It's going to be out at the regional athletic fields in the regional sports complex, they're calling it now, Pacific Avenue and Meridian. It starts at 9:30. You can go out and do a lap in raising awareness for our neighbors who have Down Syndrome themselves or they have a family member. So there's that. Also wanted to give a real high-level overview of where we are with the Department of Enterprise Services Environmental Impact Statement process. It's a lot of acronyms. We're going to get briefed again in the spring on where we are with the Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary Long-Term Management Planning Effort, but I want to let council be aware that I signed on a letter of support along with John Hutchings from Thurston County Commission, Mayor Pete Komet, Commissioner E.J. Zeta, and Cynthia Pratt, who was representing the Lot Board, to support an additional funding, a complete funding of the Phase 2 project or process. So just so people can understand, this is going to be a project-based environmental impact statement. So it'll come forward with a preferred project, a preferred outcome for the management of the Deschutes Estuary. It did not get fully funded in the capital budget a year ago, and so they're going back and hopefully they can get the balance in the 2020 supplemental budget. So that's why I signed on to this letter. But as well, we have been asked by the Department of Enterprise Services, which is overseeing this process, to help chip in on a funding and governance study. So they are going to be hiring a consultant to lead all the involved jurisdictions on finding out what we would do after we get a preferred project, how we're going to actually pay for it, and then govern that body of water. And so that's about a $250,000 to $300,000 project. That study is that much money, and they've asked all these interested parties to participate in that. And I've talked with our Finance Committee Chair, Jim Cooper, and had him briefed with Annette Meyer and Ann Larson over at DES on the need for us to contribute to that. And Jim, our Councilmember Cooper, felt that we could help up to the amount of $50,000. It would be like a two-year process to come up with this funding and governance model, and it would parallel the actual project process. And there's a complicated graph, which we'll all get updated on soon, on where we are in that process, but I just wanted to let you know that I went ahead and signed, and then as well, the Squawson Tribe sent a separate letter in support of the funding and governance study and the additional funding for the full funding for the EIS. So any questions about that? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Selby, for that update. Since you're talking about budget, can you tell us what the dollar amount is that you're requesting?
Up to $50,000.
That's for the governance?
The funding and governance study.
For the other, for the remaining phase of the EIS process?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's $2.4 million.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, they funded $4 million in the last capital budget, and so they've made a compelling argument for why we need the additional dollars to actually continue and complete the project-based EIS. And if the longer we kick the football down the field, we're going to continue to have a sick, smelly body of water. So hopefully we can get that position across to our legislators. And then we talked about that. So any other questions? All right, I'll go to Councilmember Rollins.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple items to report on. One is actually the general government meeting tomorrow, which is from 3 till about 5 here at City Hall, and we're going to be hearing about possibilities that the city might consider for tenant relocation programs for folks that are evicted without cause out of housing will because of redevelopment. So come if you're interested. And then the other item is going back to September 9th, the Community Investment Partnership met, and not a whole lot of action items were taken. However, one kind of unusual item, we had some money returned to the CIP Basic Needs Fund because the Community Action Council is no longer operating the WIC program, Women and Infant Children, which they'd been funded for. So we got about $13,000 back for that, and we opted to redistribute that to organizations who had applied for funding in the current year. So we gave a little extra money to Rochester Organization of Families, which was our top-rated applicant for this year, as well as Senior Services of South Sound for the Meals on Wheels Senior Nutrition Program.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Rollins? I have a quick one. Do you know who is managing the WIC program now? No, I don't. But I just, you know, you kind of hope that that program's continuing.
Right.
That'd be great to find out. Thank you. Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report this evening.
Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Gilman.
There we go. I wanted to report on the Land Use and Environment Committee meeting last week on the 19th. We had three agenda items. We received sort of a compilation of the Long-Term Homelessness Response Plan, focus groups, and public meetings. The input, which really just kind of came down the same way we conduct all of our politics now, on sort of a for and against, right? It wasn't particularly nuanced, and to my mind, not especially solution or behavior-oriented, more vote yes or no whether to have homeless people. And I don't know that that's a choice. So we've got some more work to do. The good news is there's more, more listening, more discussing with people. The next big public meeting will be October 26th at 9:00 a.m. at Olympia High School. So that's one where everybody's invited. And then we'll have particular interest groups and communities who will continue to meet with us. And we'll keep trying to push to recognize the reality that's in front of us and figure out how we best address this as a community. The second item that we heard about was Mike Reed brought us a draft of a request for qualifications for the 10 acres on Boulevard Road that we purchased at the same time as the LBA Woods Park and designated for residential development. The draft will come to us in a couple of weeks as a more formalized proposal. But in a nutshell, he's proposing that we put out sort of a prospectus out to potential people who might be interested, saying, tell us what you'd be interested in building there. And we've given in this, in this document, a list of the kinds of attributes that we were hoping to have. And then we would have them be part of a public process with the neighborhood and with the broader community to refine that proposal. And like we did with the community renewal area, we would offer a $25,000 matching grant to the folks conducting that public process once they're selected from the request for qualifications, because they are doing a lot of speculation to come in and hope to arrive at a, an agreement, that, a proposal that the community supports and that we sign off on. And then the last item is we, we looked at our two Housing Affordability Roundtable Workshops that we'd had the month before and spent most of our time prioritizing, here's sort of, here's the list, the priorities we're hoping to get back first. Because I know that there's been a real sense of urgency to get more going. The first priority was to finish crafting recommendations around the multifamily property tax exemptions, how those evolve. So that's what'll come back to us next. We had some input from the Fire Marshal about sprinkler requirements, residential sprinkler requirements, and especially in small units like a backyard cottage, what we might do to provide fire protection and how to mitigate the expense of the kind of residential fire sprinklers that are required now. So we're going to hear next about those. And then the other two things that we suggested would be top of the list are the Single Room Occupancy Demonstration Project, trying to solicit a project there, and working on the ways to encourage people to consider backyard cottages or converting an accessory dwelling unit within their house, including looking at the pre-approved building plans that Lacy's drafting. So those are the, those are the action steps that we're on there.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem Bateman.
Wow. Great work, Land Use and Environment Committee. Really excited about the SRO possibility. I know that single-room occupancies is one of the limited ways that we can bring down the cost of the construction of housing and achieve actually truly affordable housing for folks in our community. And we really do need a proof of concept in, of a successful project in Olympia to have that be developed. And if we can help lead the way on that and hopefully have that be the catalyst for more housing of that variety and that type, we could actually get more affordable housing in our community. Having more people building ADUs in our community is also really awesome. I'm really glad to hear that we're talking about reducing that cost with the potential, with the sprinkler requirement, and if there's other ways that we can provide safety and also the feasibility of maybe a small homeowner wanting to build an ADU on their property for a low cost and being able to rent that out. I went and visited friends in Portland recently, and they instituted a policy to where if you built an ADU on your property and you rented it out and did not turn it into an Airbnb for five years and committed to that, you could have your impact fees partially or completely waived. I didn't get the full definition of that. But that's also another way that we could potentially help reduce those costs for, you know, the outcomes that we're actually looking for. Also really excited that the Boulevard Road project is moving forward. It sounds like you've created a number of priorities from Luke that you're going to be including, that will be included in the potential, you didn't say RFP, you said something else. And then you said that that will go out to the community and there will be a consultation process. So I'm just curious, when we had, is affordability like prioritized above, is that a requirement that would be in all project proposals?
So we, working from, do you remember when we had the council discussion? And everybody offered their laundry list. I'll just quickly run through, there's six bullet points that are in the proposal.
You got it down to six. That's great.
Well, they filled, they folded together. So the first was support and participation of the surrounding neighborhoods in the design and development of the project. The second was housing for a mix of income levels with emphasis on middle-income level, and I think we refined that to median income affordable housing as the language there. Environmental sustainability and development, design and construction, quality design that reflects the character of the surrounding area, inclusion of a neighborhood commercial or community benefit element is encouraged, and performance and timeliness of the developer builder is critical. Those are the...
I appreciate the clarification, and we did have a long list. I have to go on the record saying that I truly feel that affordability is the highest priority, and I thought that was the intention when we peeled off 10 acres out of the 500 acres that we're going to be housing and were turned into a park for our community, that we, we have limited ways that we can leverage public resources in order to actually achieve affordable housing. And having these homes potentially located right next to a park, I'm, I guess I don't have clarity on why we would, we would seek trying to do middle-income folks versus affordable housing, or how you're defining that.
So housing affordable to people at our median income is already less, it's less than the going rate or than apartments that are available in town.
So like, what kind of a price range are we talking?
It would be like...
AMI that you'd probably use?
Well, if you use, so if you use a family of three, the citywide AMI, and they're at 100%, they could afford about $1,200 for rent. So that's, that, there's a, there's definitely a lack there that...
So we're talking affordable for families, then? Maybe that would be a better way to describe it.
Yeah, the affordability by the HUD standards is based on household size. So there's a different affordable rent for one, two, three, four, more, you know, people in the household. And so we were imagining that these would be apartments with, rather than trying to go smaller and smaller, the thing is for people first out on their own, for singles and for elders, you know, a tiny place works. But there's a time in the middle where there's more than one person in the household, right? And what do you do to satisfy that, that demand?
Thank you for that clarification. I agree. I can see the perspective of the committee members and where you were going with that. I'd also just put out there, thinking about economies of scale, if there's any way that we can achieve more. And there are different, like row houses, for example, with yards. And I know Lehigh, for example, they've done projects, permanent supportive housing. They've also done affordable housing for lower-income folks, for families. And when they do that, the housing looks different because they want to have a little bit of a yard versus the permanent supportive housing. So it looks different. So there are different models of that. I just really want to hold up the affordability, and I know, and I hope that that continues to be the highest priority. So thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you.
So, quick question. Councilmember Jones.
So thanks for your report and thanks for your comments. Much appreciated. Councilmember Gilman, when you talked about these four priorities, you talked about they will be coming back. Will they be coming back to the committee or coming back to the full council? Great. And do we have a timeframe?
I'll look to, I thought we did, but I don't see it on the future agendas right now.
Great. I thank you.
So hoping for the first meeting in October, but it's still, the document's still being drafted right now.
Great.
Okay. And that list of six items, was that in priority order?
No. It's, it was to give the prospective project partners a chance to hear what our priorities were. And it's just the beginning of a conversation, first with the city staff and then with community members coming into public process.
Oh, so we do have a draft RFQ. All right. Thank you. Yes, 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 yes. Councilmember Partially.
Just to clarify one point, in affordability, it wasn't going to be limiting it to the middle-income, and I've been schooled not to say workforce anymore. But we're going for that portion of our population that are working, that market is way above. And that's what we're looking for because that is on a lot of the analysis where we're not building in this city. But we're not limiting it to just that. This was to try to make it easy for people to come in and start working with us. I have two things to report. The first is a, the Lot Board, Water Treatment Board met on September 11th, was covered quite a few things, including the fact that we had been doing hauled waste, which comes from step and septic systems from other jurisdictions as well as Thurston County. But it actually, due to our great water conservation, has made it very difficult in our process. And as of February, we may not be taking that outside of the folks that are in our inner local agreement because of the process and trying to keep it as environmentally friendly and effective as we can. We did also talk about the Capital Lake EIS, and the board formally voted to support Cynthia Pratt, our president, to do that. We had got an update on the Puget Sound nutrient source reduction. And that is where the state of Washington is actually looking at the Puget Sound as a whole instead of individual water treatment plants to ensure that we get nutrient removal and nitrogen removal from the water, because we have been focusing on Capital Lake in a lot of respects as a greatest impact on our own total daily minimum loads, when in reality, some of the water treatment plants north of us, Seattle, Tacoma, and so forth, are impacting us quite a bit. So we wrote a letter in support of a kind of a generalized permitting process. We also got an update on our new UV light process that has been under construction since January 2019, I think. It should be hopefully back online by December. The percetic acid, which was used in replacement for the UV, caused some interesting problems with clogging of a fairly benign fungus that actually gave a lot of folks and our constituents concerns that we were actually putting out coliform into the Puget Sound. We were not. The problem with the percetic acid is that it was messing up our sampling process, and it gave an inaccurate coliform release. So I just wanted to put that out there because we have gotten some emails. Good news, we've got a, one of the state's loans for that process where we're going to combine our aerobic and anaerobic and hopefully reduce the carbon footprint for lot by 25%. We got, the loan is a very good loan from the state. We got the highest rating. It'll potentially, if the design comes in, pay for about half of our project, which could be as much as $28 million to put this in. The rest will probably go to bonds and maybe loans. The last thing is, we had an update on our wet program. I didn't realize this, but they've been so far booking 60 kids a day. They had over, almost 3,000 students last year. Tomwater, Olympia, and North Thurston County School Districts have already decided to work with them. And last year, they saw seven, over 17,000 visitors. 50% of those people had never been there, and 38% weren't even from our county. So this center is actually gaining speed, especially being close to the Children's Hands-On Museum. It's become a full-deal meal. And that is it. Oh, wait, the Community Care Center went to that meeting, and the conversations were primarily about the upcoming winter and the impact on the Community Care Center, and concern for shelters opening and the gaps between the Community Care Center closures at the end of the day and the opening of the shelters to take in folks for dinners and shelter at night, and the impact on the businesses around there, which are beginning to be severely impacted. And some of these businesses have been the biggest supporters of the Community Care Center. So I want to ensure that people understand, these folks are not complaining about this. They're just looking towards the future. And then we found out that the Community Care Center has a $200,000 restroom repair potentially coming up. And the Community Care Center is not certain what to do with that because that's two years' use of the bathrooms, and we're having to put $200,000 into them to repair. And that's not just the physical rooms, but also the plumbing.
Any questions for Councilmember Partially? Thanks for attending the CCC meeting and reporting back. All right. Assistant City Manager for a while, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
All right. At this point, we are going to recess to executive session to discuss a matter related to real estate. No decisions will be made. The meeting is expected to last no longer than 30 minutes, and the council will adjourn immediately following executive session.